Good evening, everyone. I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Roll call, please. Alder President Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right, we start the evening with item 4.1, ICMA Bob Turner Scholars Internship Program. Sir Vitas.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It gives me great pleasure, actually, to have Said present this evening to close out his summer-long internship with the city of Moline. Said was one of ten interns nationwide that was selected by ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association, which is an organization of over 10,000 member members. So it's huge. It's worldwide. But he was selected along with nine other young people across the country, graduated seniors, to participate in the Bob Turner program. Bob Turner was a former city manager who left an endowment for this purpose. And so he was selected and he participated, did well here in the city first and foremost, and really got to know the city and meet the directors and get an understanding of what local government is, because when you come to work here, usually the young people don't. So they gained tremendous knowledge while they're here, and he was one of seventeen interns this summer. So we had quite a busy summer with a lot of young people running around our buildings. But to Said's credit, he was partnered with two young ladies from Salinas, California, and they participated in a competition with the other interns across the country. And his team was successful in winning the award, which came with a little financial stipend as well, as well as an invitation to attend the ICMA Annual Convention, all expense paid, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, should he choose to go. So anyhow, kudos to Said and his team for the work they did. And with that, I want to introduce Said to come up and say a few words. And then he has a presentation he's going to share with you, which is based on how they won the award in the first place, but he localized it and made it Moline Zone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vitas. If everyone didn't know, my name's Said Sarojev. I was an intern here during my nine weeks here at the city of Moline. I mean, if anything that hasn't been said already, one of my main jobs here was to learn. And I think I did pretty, a lot of that. Before coming here, I had no idea, like, everything existed, you know? I didn't realize the mayor had the clerk or the coordinators or everyone in the executive department who worked together with her. I also learned about grant writing. I had experience with that. I had experience drafting up an integrated pest management plan, so that was pretty fun. I also sat in on director meetings. So I saw the many directors around the city, like fire, engineering, and all the other directors. I saw how they, like, talked together, how they engaged. You know, they talked with the administrator and they all talked about their projects, so that was good. It's good to see that the city, you know, is trying to make this city better. Part of my internship here, as Bob already explained, I was part of the ICMA program. You know, we had a final project, and we were tasked, it was four other teams, me and my two partners, we were tasked with a social media campaign. That's what we came up with, trying to get youth, get more involved with local government. We had an Instagram page. We pushed out surveys, you know, to see if people knew about local government, you know, people my age. And people didn't, you know? We had questions, asking them, hey, are you aware of this going on? Are you aware of council meetings? Do you know who the administrator is, what he does? And, you know, most people didn't know, right? And I didn't know either, you know, until I came here and learned. So I think it was pretty good, me being here. And like you said, you know, I won a stipend. Our team won, which was pretty awesome. Get to use that for textbooks, which I'm grateful for. Thank you, ICMA. And because today is my last day here, I have a video I'm going to present. It's going to be featuring all the departments here in the city. It's, you know, I went around and I asked each of the departments to talk about what they did for young people, you know, any services they did, you know, to get young people involved with local government. Not all the departments had opportunities specifically with local government and young people, but I asked them to just talk about what they had for the youth in general. So without further ado, my video. Hi, my name is Said, and I'm an intern at the city of Moline, and I need you to get involved.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sangitha Raiapati. Our city's partnership with our local schools is about building a strong future for our students and our community. From internships to serving on boards and commissions, we can work together to build a strong, vibrant community.
Hi, I'm Brandy Russell, your deputy city clerk. Voting is the cornerstone of our democracy. Every vote counts, and your voice matters. By participating in elections, you help shape the future of our city. So make sure you're registered to vote, and remember to vote in every election.
Hi, I'm Police Deputy Chief Andrew Rye. Building strong relationships with our youth is a priority for the police department. We are committed to creating positive interactions through mentorships, programs, school visits, and community events. Let's work together to keep our community safe and connected.
Hi, I'm Deputy Fire Chief Travis Lloyd. The future of our fire department depends on our youth, and we're always looking for great ways to get young people involved. We're committed to educating and inspiring the next generation. These connections are vital to our community's safety and help us build a stronger, more prepared team for the future.
Hi, I'm Tess, the teen services librarian at the Moline Public Library. Through our teen library council, Moline teens are empowered to make decisions about library services and materials and volunteer their time to support the library's mission.
Hello, I'm Brandon Tidwell, human resource manager. Here at the city of Moline, we're passionate about recruiting the next generation of leaders. Whether you're looking for internships, part-time jobs, or career advice, we're here to help. Let's work together to find the right opportunity for your future.
Hi, my name is Denver Schmidt. I am the public works director for the city of Moline. Our department is full of opportunities for those looking to start their career. We have several different entry-level positions, which is a great way to get your foot in the door. In fact, we have many staff now who started in those entry-level positions who are now promoted up to leadership positions and also crew leader positions as well in the areas of sanitation, parks maintenance, streets, leads, facilities, and also administration.
Hello and welcome to the utilities department. Have you ever wondered how our award-winning clean and safe drinking water gets to your tap? Join us for an inside look with a water treatment plant tour. Our guided tour will take you behind the scenes, showing you the advanced processes and technology that ensures the highest quality water for our city. It's an educational experience for all ages and a chance to see the science of water treatment up close.
But our commitment to clean water doesn't stop at the plant. We need your help in the community, too. We have a great initiative called the Adopt a Drain Program. It's your opportunity to protect our waterways and keep our neighborhoods clean. By adopting a drain, you can help prevent pollution, reduce flooding, and ensure that only rainwater goes down the drain.
From our water treatment plant to your neighborhood, we're working to keep our water safe and your community clean, but we can't do it alone. Join us on a water plant tour or help by adopting a drain today, because every job counts. So does every effort.
My name is David Dryer. I'm the Director of City Engineering. Engineering positions are always in high demand, particularly when it comes to the public streets and underground infrastructure projects. Engineers, electricians, and engineering technicians play a crucial role in designing, building, and maintaining the infrastructure necessary for a local city. If you're passionate about problem solving, enjoy the sciences, and want to make a tangible impact, engineering may be the perfect field for you.
Hi, I'm Eric Griffith, the Director of Parks and Recreation. One way to get involved with city government is joining the Youth Advisory Board. Looking for students from the ninth to 12th grade, living in Moline, going to school in Moline, to help us determine the future of Moline Parks and Recreation. We want students to help us plan events, new amenities for our parks, and make it more inviting for teenagers to join in.
I'm Bob Vitas, City Administrator from Moline, Illinois. Our internship program is one of the greatest opportunities for our young people to get involved in local government, whether you're interested in community and economic development, urban planning, city administration, municipal law. It's a world of opportunity for young people to engage in our community and bring about wonderful change in the future.
Remember, don't forget to...
Get involved! Stay involved!
Thank you, city of Moline. I'd love to come back next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Said.
And you've been with us one summer before, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for sharing all of that.
That was fun.
All right, we'll move to presentation 4.2, Retirement Presentation for Police K-9 Annie. Chief call.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to invite Annie and then her current handler, Officer Eric Schultz, and previous handler, Detective Derek Colson, to join me. So today, we gather to celebrate the retirement of K-9 Annie, who has been a steadfast companion and invaluable asset to our police force. Annie began her police career on May 24, 2017, and over the past seven years, she has left an incredible mark in our community. Her dedication, loyalty, and unmatched skill have helped us in ways words alone cannot fully convey. Today, as we announce her well-deserved retirement, we reflect on her extraordinary service and the profound impact she has made here at Moline. Annie is an immigrant, hailing from her homeland in Poland. She came to the Moline Police Department through a generous financial donation by Doug Kaiser in memory of his wife, Ann Kaiser, who passed away in 2015. The Kaiser donation was used to purchase Annie from a canine importer and training company. And K-9 Annie is a dual-purpose dog, meaning she is trained in narcotics detection, article searches, tracking, and apprehension. Ann Kaiser has strong love of pets, and Doug wanted to do something in his wife's memory, and I think he certainly succeeded. K-9 Annie has been featured in the Quadsy Times, WKAD, and other news outlets. Her heroics have been featured on our Facebook page oftentimes as well. It is essential to recognize the pivotal role that full-service canines like Annie play in modern police work. These remarkable animals are not just pets or partners. They are highly-trained professionals who perform critical tasks that often put them in harm's way. Their work goes beyond the call of duty, providing capabilities that human officers alone simply cannot replicate. From tracking down fugitives to locating crucial evidence, and from sniffing out illicit drugs to assisting in apprehensions, Annie has done it all. Her keen senses and unyielding resolve have made her an indispensable part of our team. In her career, she has located and seized over $1.1 million in illegal drugs. Specifically, in 2018, she located over $63,000 in methamphetamine. In 2019, she located 3,877 grams of fentanyl and 2,000 grams of heroin. As you know, our heroin and fentanyl are a growing crisis, and seizing those illicit drugs are vital in protecting our community. Annie's prowess in tracking has led to countless successful resolutions and cases. Her drug-detection skills have been instrumental in keeping our streets safe and ensuring that illegal substances are intercepted before they can cause harm. Her ability to apprehend suspects with precision and reliability has directly contributed to our community's safety and security. After seven years of tireless dedication, Annie has earned her retirement. She has suffered several injuries, including a torn ACL in 2022. You can notice she's a short-tail, a tail injury in 2023, and unfortunately, a second torn ACL in 2024. As you can see, she's kind of limping around a little bit, just like all of us as approaching our retirement. Don't get around quite as well. But it's also a testament to the physical demands and sacrifices that come with such a high-stakes role. And despite this challenge, she has continued to demonstrate incredible resilience. As we bid farewell to Annie's active duty, let us remember her service as a reminder of the profound bond between law enforcement officers and their canine partners. This bond built on trust, mutual respect, and unwavering commitment is a powerful force that enhances our ability to protect and serve. I'd like to commend Derek Colson, her canine handler from 2017 to 2019, and Eric Schultz, her current handler, from 2020 to today. State law allows police service dogs to retire from service and be remanded to the care of her handler. Today, on the consent agenda, you have a resolution in front of you to retire K-9 Annie and give her to Officer Schultz to remain as a part of his family. Officer Schultz has agreed to take on K-9 Annie in her senior years, providing her all the comforts of a retirement village. And to all our current and future canine handlers, when we have one of them here today that's replacing Officer Schultz in K-9 Annie, let us continue to uphold the legacy of service and dedication that Annie has so gracefully exemplified. Your work is vital, your sacrifices are acknowledged, and your impact is profound. And in closing, I'd also like to thank the families of the officers that serve alongside them. These animals live at home with their handlers, and thus, they also live at home with their families. I think we've got children that grew up around Annie, and will have those happen in future canines' wives, spouses, that also play a pivotal role in taking care of them and putting up with them and their spouses. So thank you, K-9 Annie, Derek, and Eric. Annie, wish you well and all your best in your retirement. You will always hold a special place in our hearts and in the history of our police force. So Eric, on behalf of the police department, I'd like to present you with this plaque. K-9 Annie, our police department, appreciation of your seven years of loyal and dedicated service, and service May 24, 2017, and retired August 27, 2020. Thank you very much. Before we close, Bob, you ready for the demo? You've got one last bite over the desk? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who's cared for her.
That was great.
We continue with some proclamations. Item 5.1, excuse me, a proclamation declaring the month of September 2024 as suicide prevention month and the week of September 8 through 14, 2024, as suicide prevention week. Cecilia Bailey, did you want to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Council, for having me. I am Cecilia Bailey, the Quadsy's Open Network Executive Director. But today, I serve in the role as Quadsy's Behavioral Health Coalition Steering Committee Member and Fiscal Agent of the Zero Quadsy Zero Suicide Initiative. So the Quadsy Zero Suicide Initiative is an initiative that has, right now, 59 participating agencies, government bodies, working towards suicide prevention efforts, as well as bringing the community down to zero suicides. So the Quadsy's Behavioral Health Coalition in its whole has over about 75 or 80 members. And so with the Zero Suicide Initiative, we have three goals. One is to promote a 1,000-day app campaign that, in fact, suicide is preventable. We are in our second year of this campaign, wrapping out our third year this year. And we have so far successfully been able to advertise with a great partnership with media partners, getting that message out. Additionally, we have our second goal, which is to train 1,000 persons in a suicide prevention training. I am so happy to report that we finalized out numbers just the last month, and we were almost at 600 people. And we have in queue over 600. So we will more than meet our 1,000-person goal with 300 more days to get that work done. So we're super excited about that. And then our third goal, again, is to have 100 participating organizations, municipalities, looking at their policies, procedures, protocols, and they interface with someone who might have a mental health issue or potentially suicidal, and learning to understand how to have conversations, make referrals, and truly just bringing the community back to a level of recognizing relationship first and understanding that one person alone isn't going to prevent a suicide. It takes a community. It takes all of us, recognizing symptoms, understanding signs, and interfacing and knowing that we can, in fact, save a life. So I am happy and honored to be here and super, super excited to enter our third annual walk, the Walk for Zero Suicide, September 7. I hope to see many of you there with a suicide prevention t-shirt or just purple and teal, walking across that bridge for our third annual Walk for Zero Suicide, September 7, at San Diego.
Thank you so much. The proclamation reads, whereas the cities of Bettendorf, Iowa, and Moline, Illinois are members of the Quadsy Health Initiative, and both cities have participated in the Quadsy's Behavioral Health Coalition, and whereas suicide is a major public health concern and a leading cause of death in the United States, affecting people of all ages, races, and socioeconomic backgrounds; and whereas every year, more than 45,000 individuals in the United States die by suicide, leaving countless loved ones and communities devastated by these tragic losses; and whereas National Suicide Prevention Month is observed annually in September to bring attention to this critical issue, encourage open conversations about mental health, and reduce the stigma surrounding suicide; and whereas during National Suicide Prevention Week, held from September 8 through 14, we join individuals, communities, and organizations across the nation in focusing our efforts on raising awareness, spreading hope, and sharing vital information about suicide prevention; and whereas, by coming together as a community, we can show compassion, provide support, and take meaningful actions to prevent suicide, ensuring that no one feels alone in their struggle; and whereas, in recognition of suicide prevention, the city of Moline will host a two-mile-walk over the I-74 Bridge Walk for Zero Suicide on September 7, 2024. Now, therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month and the week of September 8 through 14, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Moline, Illinois, and urge all residents to learn about this significant month. Thank you, Cecilia. You can come and take this. And I want to say, in terms of reducing stigma, I appreciate your work. My brother actually was a victim of suicide in the 90s, having jumped off a bridge. And so I appreciate you bringing this to us. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So we'll move to item 5.2, A Proclamation from Ovarian Cancer Research Alliance, declaring the month of September 2024 as ovarian cancer awareness month. So it's very clear that we have many passionate community members about many causes that impact our health as a community and as an individual, so I'm proud to read these proclamations, if I can see out of my tearful eyes. Okay. Whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause... Oh, thank you so much. Very much appreciated. The fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths of women in the United States and causes more deaths than any other gynecologic cancer. And whereas, in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is about 1 in 78. And whereas, too many people remain unaware that the symptoms of ovarian cancer often include bloating, pelvic or abdominal pain, difficulty eating or feeling full quickly, urinary symptoms, and several other vague symptoms that are often easily confused with other diseases. And whereas, improved awareness of the symptoms of ovarian cancer by the public and healthcare providers can lead to a quicker diagnosis. And whereas, ongoing investments in ovarian cancer research and education and awareness efforts are critical to closing these gaps and improving survivorship for women end up with ovarian cancer. And whereas, each year, during the month of September, Ovarian Cancer Research Alliance and community partner organizations hold a number of events to increase public awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Now, therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of September as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Moline, Illinois, and urge all residents to learn about this significant month. And we don't have anyone with us today to take the proclamation, but we'll make sure that those that contacted us get it. Thank you, everyone. Is there public comment this evening, Chief? Any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to our Committee of the Whole Agenda Items. 8.1, A Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Bylaws of Special Service Areas Number Six, Advisory Board of Directors, Section Four, Number, Tenure, and Qualifications, to reflect that the number of directors shall be nine. Each director shall hold office for a term not to exceed three years, and directors can serve consecutive terms limited to nine years. And terms shall align with the Special Service Area Fiscal Year of January 1 to December 31, effective upon approval and passage of this resolution. Sir Vitas?
I believe that the resolution, as read, pretty much defines and describes exactly what we're attempting to do and based upon recommendations coming from the Special Service Area Board members and as it's administered by Mr. Marskey with Renew Moline, it would be in order to approve this change.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 8.2, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Application for Funding Under the Rock Island County Waste Management Agency for the Solid Waste Assistance Grant Program, Fiscal Year 25, for the amount of $42,985 to be used for solid waste management, recycling, or educational-related activities within the community, and authorizing the Director of Public Works to do all things necessary to complete and submit said application.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. And we submit application for SWAG grant funding. This goes to a number of different programs we have for the department. A few of those do regard recycling programs, for able to purchase carts and lids to offset costs for residents, also able to promote, advertise, and buy supplies for neighborhood and community events like cleanups and other types of recycling events. So we're essentially looking to enter application for these funds.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 There-Ave, Parking Prohibited at Any Time, by Adding Sixth Avenue on the South Side, Beginning at a Point 110 Feet East of 53rd Street, Continuing East for 60 Feet.
That would be the recommendation of the Traffic Committee to adopt the ordinance, which would create the parking prohibition as laid out in the ordinance. Recommending approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.4, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Azovar Audit Solutions, Inc., DBA Azovar Government Solutions, and an agreement letter with Cozen O'Connor for Compliance Audits and Ongoing Revenue Maximization and Monitoring Services on a Contingency Basis. Sir Vitas?
Yes, Mayor, and members of Council. The city has a longstanding history working with Azovar dating back to, I believe it was 2014. And essentially, it is a firm that performs external auditing services of revenue streams that are due the city from the Illinois Department of Revenue, as well as other sources, in particular, motor fuel taxes. Oftentimes, those go unreported, and those need to be reported, and they need to be refunded to the city. Another example would be hotel motel taxes. We have not, in the past, audited hotel motel taxes. So that is one of the reasons why we're engaging them again and extending this agreement with them, is to be able to go in and verify that we are receiving all monies due and owed the city properly and on a contingency basis, then compensating them, so there's no direct out-of-pocket expense to the city. So we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Any conversation, questions? I had one, just to make sure. So they are not doing the work that we have our staff do through munisies to collect?
No.
Fines, et cetera? Okay. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Informationals. Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Project, Mr. Dryer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this project with you. This is our Seventh Avenue reconstruction from 15th Street to just shy of 19th Street. We received a $3 million grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce. It's about three tenths of a mile long project. And as part of this process, we've been working with Hutchinson Engineers, and they are here tonight to present the design concepts prepared to date. And so we have Shane Larson and John Clark, both from Hutchinson Engineering, to go through the PowerPoint and then take any questions after the presentation that you may have.
Thank you.
David's tall. Well, thank you, David. Good evening, everyone. As David said, my name is Shane Larson, and I'm with Hutchinson Engineering. We were hired by the city to provide design engineering... We were hired by the city to provide design engineering services for the Seventh Avenue project. So I'm going to go ahead and jump in. We're going to talk about some general information first. As David said, the project is along Seventh Avenue from 15th Street on the west end to 19th Street on the east end, or just shy of 19th. And we'll have some exhibits to show exactly the tie-in points. The scope of the project overall, there's a road diet, you hear that term. We got a lot of pavement out there that, well, some of it's not even being used now because the road's so wide. So when they're up the road, the pavement's in really bad condition, you guys that drive that. So we're going to reconstruct the entire pavement. We're going to do some intersection reconfiguration. I'll get into what that means. And you guys have done such a nice job in the downtown area on other streetscape jobs. We're going to employ some of those streetscape concepts into this project. The estimated cost is right now, and we're still in preliminary engineering, but it's 3.75 million. Out of that, as David said, 3 million is coming from a DCEO grant, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant, that the city was awarded two years ago. It's been a little slow on DCOs, but I think two years ago, right? And the remainder of that will come out of motor fuel tax and other funds here in the city. We have engaged the public to this point. We did some stakeholder meetings. We invited church people that live along there, other community leaders have been involved in at least two meetings, correct, David, to help us get to where we're at. So I don't want anybody to think it was just David and Shane off making up crazy engineering ideas, right? There's been other people involved in these decisions. We also had a public information meeting here at City Hall a few weeks ago. Very positive, not necessarily a ton of attendees, but everybody who was there was very positive. Property impacts, that's always an issue to everybody, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we look at that 15th Street intersection. But there is a property right there that the city's already engaged in looking at, had conversations with the owner, and at this point, David, those conversations have been positive. Correct. So as far as schedule, we're hoping to finish up design by the end of 2024. We'd be looking to have a bid opening in early 2025, start construction as soon as the weather breaks in spring of 2025, and if all goes well, we'd love to be done by the end of 2025. Aggressive schedule, but I think it's very doable. Okay, so as far as the limits, and I know that's small, but we're going to, we'll be zooming in on this. But as we talked, the 15th Street intersection would be to everybody's right, no matter which, or I'm sorry, left, no matter which way you're looking, and 19th Street would be on everybody's right. The project will tie into the improvements that are ongoing on 19th Street, so there'll be no rework there. I mean, this has been designed to fit right in with when that's done. The rest of it, like I say, we'll dive in as we start looking. So roundabouts a little bit. I know that roundabouts, or some people love them, some people don't. But from an engineering standpoint, I will say that roundabouts do lower traffic speed. You no longer have that, I hit a green light, I'm driving 45, 50 miles an hour anywhere, let alone on 7th. They are proven. This is, these aren't Shane Larson's facts. These are Federal Highway Administration facts I have up here. They have consistently proven to lower serious and fatal crashes by, as you can see, up to 80%. And why? Because you don't have that situation where two people ran the light or there was, you know, somebody, it was their turn to go, and someone didn't stop. Increased efficiency. We've ran, we did traffic counts, we ran to our traffic software. The DOT has even reviewed it, agreed with our numbers, that you're going to see everybody, for the most part, is going to have less wait time with a roundabout and the two roundabouts we're proposing. Safer for pedestrians, there's less conflict points. You know, a pedestrian doesn't have to worry about that person making a left or someone making a right on a red light and they didn't see it. So there's just less conflict points and no traffic signal costs. No initial traffic signal costs, no long-term traffic signal maintenance costs. So those are, those are facts. Like I say, those aren't things I'm making up. Those have been proven over time throughout the, really throughout the world, but alone in the U.S. All right, so I'm going to jump in. We're going to move down and look at each intersection. So this is the 15th Street intersection, which you probably all know is kind of an awkward intersection now with five legs and, you know, 15th Street comes in on a skew with Seventh Avenue. It really is somewhat tailor-made for a roundabout to help fix those situations. So as you can, you can see there, I, John, you can correct me, I got John Clark with me, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we're going to maintain, ooh, my pointer. Yeah, it doesn't work on that screen. Yeah. Yep, so the dog park's here. Obviously, north of downtown is top of the screen. You know, we're maintaining access to 8th Avenue there. The property we're talking about in question, that we're going to have to buy, at this point, the property is small enough that although we only need part of it, there wouldn't be enough left of that parcel to matter. So we've already engaged, Dave Dreyer and his group is talking to the property owner about buying that parcel and working with them to further develop that. What's left? Any questions about that? I mean, just the roundabout in general. Okay. So as you see, though, as you start to head off the right side of the screen or head to the east towards 16th Street, you're going to start to see, and it's already two lanes now, but the theme, I mean, let me go back, the theme of that is we're going to get Seventh Avenue down to two lanes throughout that corridor. All right, I'm going to show you before and after now. So now, that's what it looks like right now. So before, after. So that is actual photos that our, our staff has used. So if you look at that, I mean, those are the actual buildings. So, you know, will it look exactly like that when we're done? We hope so. I mean, that's, so let me do that again. We got before and after. So we're hoping that's what that looks like, you know, with your two lanes coming in, you know, one lane into the roundabout and one lane out. So that would be looking, sorry, I shouldn't have said that, that's looking west through the roundabout. Okay, 16th Street. So 16th Street now, you've got some wide pavement there, but for the most part, it's, it's two lanes as you come up to the west side of the intersection. And on the other side, it starts to transition from 2 to 4 as you go to 17th Street. So we're going to get rid of all that extra pavement you got. There's no, there's really no parking. There's some parking there between 15th and 16th on the south side of the road, closer to 15th. We're going to maintain that parking. There's residents along there, and that was very clear from the beginning that that parking needed state. So we're going to maintain that. So at this intersection, this will be, 16th Street will have stop signs. Seventh Avenue will not have to stop. And our traffic study shows there are just not enough traffic on 16th to really warrant traffic signals. Maybe there was years ago when there was more traffic. There was not any longer. So stop signs on 16th, free flow on 7th. Okay? Now we're at 17th. Basically, the same situation. We're going to get rid of traffic signals there. 17th Street will have stop signs, Seventh Avenue will free flow. So you can see how Seventh Avenue traffic is going to, I mean, you can see why that'll be more efficient. You know, we're still working through the pedestrians. You're going to have pedestrian crossings, and we'll make sure that those stay safe, even though 7th doesn't stop. There's different ways we can do that with signage and flashing lights. Now, as you start to go east, right side of the screen, headed towards 18th Street, you can start to see, we're going to get ourselves lined up for the second roundabout at 18th Street. And so here will be your normal roundabout. As you come out of the roundabout, you head towards 19th. As you probably are all aware, a lot of that was part of the I-74 job is new pavement. So we're going to maintain most of that as you come out to the east. As you're heading west from that intersection, we're going to get rid of some of that extra pavement so that we can get down to one lane going into the roundabout to funnel that traffic. I'm going to give you a little before and after again. So before and after. Before. After. All right, so streetscape plan, I won't get into a whole lot of that. The one, you know, once again, you guys have done, and you see it. You've done a lot of that around town. These are pictures from your downtown area. We'll be looking to do a lot of the same. You know, same lighting, same concrete colors and textures. So it all ties into what's going on on 19th Street, and will tie into what you've already done on 5th. So, you know, that will all look very cohesive.
Shane, go back to the slide with the roundabout, explain that truck ring.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so what you see in a lot of roundabouts, and I may have John point. So we design for a truck turning radius on the outside ring. And I'll have John kind of point to what I mean, that outside ring. And so, you know, that is designed for, you know, a UPS truck or smaller delivery trucks. The inside ring is pavement. You know, so we designed that for a much bigger truck turning radius. So a bigger truck turning radius is allowed to track over that inside pavement. That's not sidewalk. We designed it as pavement so that it can withstand that truck traffic. So, you know, a majority of your vehicles are going to use that outer ring, but their inner ring is set up that a bigger truck can track over that. The inside of that would be landscaped, and, you know, we're going to work with, you know, city staff and, you know, communities in the downtown Moline area to determine exactly what that landscaped area looks like. David, that?
That covers it.
Okay.
Questions, comments? Mr. Timmy and?
I have a few. I appreciate the work that went in here. I assume the inner truck ring, question one, would be adequate for our fire trucks with the station right there?
Yes.
We don't want to limit their ability to go east-west.
Yeah, we're actually, the inner ring is designed for a vehicle bigger than your fire truck. So it would be somewhere in between an outer ring and an inner ring design.
Yeah, it's more for an interstate center truck.
Okay.
53-foot trailer.
My other question is, you mentioned tying in the 19th Street project, which I appreciate. We have a lot of construction going on there now, part of which is a north-south dedicated bike lane. Why we're bike lanes, not incorporated here, the, this is the first real east-west street avenue south of the hill, and we don't have another one until the river. And so I always thought this was a prime opportunity, considering how much, how much width we had to deal with to throw in something like that.
Yeah, and go ahead, David. I'll let you.
Can you come to the mic so the recording picks you up?
We looked at the city's bike lane plan, and it really wasn't noted on there. And I think, too, that the width, we would lose some of the parking that was available there, which is, would be a problem for those residents along that corridor. I mean, we will have wide sidewalks. It's not as desirable as an on-street bike facility, as you know, but...
Yeah, no, David's right. There's some concerns, you know, there's a lot of width, right, down through the, we're doing a road diet. Where we're a little tight is down where those residences are at. And, you know, our concern was, you know, you either shift the alignment and try to put a bike trail on one side, which forces you to shift one way or the other, or you had bike lanes on the road on either side. Now, a bike lane has to be at least five feet, so I would need, I got to get 10 feet from somewhere. And the concern was, do we take that away from parking? You know, once you get away from there, there's definitely more room. So I, that's where that came from with that. And, you know, and then coupling that with, it wasn't in the master bike plan, I think this, the decision that's been made at this point, I'm not saying.
Yeah, our bike plan is very out of date.
Other questions? Mr. Macias?
Yes, thank you. With a project that's supposed to go these many months, could you explain a little bit about how you do it in phases? Or you obviously don't throw out the whole length. Can you please explain that process?
Yes, and we're still working through that, but our initial thoughts is that we would try to cut it in at least half. And we've kicked around, you know, do you keep two lanes open all the time and try to build the other half? And I think the more we look at that, we're just afraid it's going to run the cost up significantly to do that. So we're looking now more of closing either half or thirds and closing sections at a time and get in there and get it done and get out and move on to the next section with maintaining north-south streets. So they couldn't necessarily have side-by-side north-south streets closed. That way, you keep traffic moving into the downtown area. And we've already had good discussions with the residents down on the west end about that, and maybe where we could have them park when we're doing that. We've had good discussions with the church and about how to get them in and out. And so thus far, we feel like everybody, I feel like we can make that work. Either way, whether that's halves or thirds, and just close 7th for full blocks, build, move on.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Schmidt?
I just was curious, going to no signal at 17th in particular because that would be the primary access from the fire trucks, I'd imagine. And just if there's anything that's there, if there has to be a fire warning light, like we do by a lot of our other stations. I mean, I know it's not right by the door, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, and definitely something we're working through and communicating with the fire department, the police station with their entrances down there, making sure, what we don't want to do, right, is, I mean, we can't, everybody else is happy, but fire trucks can't get out. That didn't do us any good. So those are issues, I will tell you, we haven't gotten into all those details yet, but something we want to make sure that we don't hamper their exit out of the firehouse.
What else?
I want to say, thank you for the single-lane version of this. I have recently driven across southern Wisconsin, Washington State, all over the place. And the double-lane, the double-lane circles are really, are, they are difficult to navigate. But I guess in a sense, I'm saying I want to assure the community that these are manageable because I've seen the difference, and this, this version is a lot more manageable than the others.
You know, and I think obviously traffic volumes drive that. And at some point, the traffic volumes get high enough that, you know, they feel, you know, the engineering, that they can't do it in one lane, and that's true. Unfortunately, it starts to cause other issues, and that's what we feel. It's funneling everybody into one lane before you get there, you know, helps that, for sure.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you so much for this sneak peek. We'll look forward to things coming, moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, I'll call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Alderperson Finch?
I do not.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting Minutes of August 13, 2024, and Consent Agenda Items 15.1 through 15.3 inclusively.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
That's Timian, seconded by Macias. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. No motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number 17.1, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to execute a master service agreement with InfoSend, Inc. for utility billing, presentment services with an anticipated annual cost of $28,320 at current postal rates.
Motion to approve. Thank you. Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Okay, discussion? Okay, discussion. I had a question I did not, I did not get to ask via email, I apologize.
Into you.
In the, in the explanation, it said the fiscal impact was just over fifty-three thousand, but the amount here is twenty-eight thousand. I wasn't understanding the difference, where that was coming from or why.
Hi, this is Janine.
Hi.
I apologize, hi. No, that was the amount that we had budgeted. So the fiscal impact actually is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred. I'm sorry if that was misprinted.
All right, that's fine, we can just make a scrivener note, does that work?
That works for me.
Minutes? Okay, in the explanation. Thank you so much. Anything, yes, Mr. Macias?
Thank you, your honor. So currently, if people do auto pay, even with a credit card, they don't pay a fee. Will this charge a fee for those folks?
It will not. We aren't looking at digital services from them at this time. The first step was to get those printed bills into the hands of our customers faster. But at the same time, now we are investigating a digital presentment and payment source. InfoSend is one, they did include that in their proposal, but that's not something that this resolution includes at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm, I'm glad to see us moving forward with making this change. I long as a proponent of us moving toward our monthly billing to make it a lot easier for people to keep track of that, myself included. And I think, I, we've seen a lot of people running into these challenges with just the longer mail times. I mean, it didn't matter as much on a quarterly bill. But that's something that's been come up, and I'm really appreciative of us seeking out that solution and just trying to make sure we can take that pressure off our residents, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries, and that's all I have this evening, your honor.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. The packet I put in front of you is something that came in late via email that I had mentioned a couple weeks ago, the information from ByState using their in-plan analysis about the potential impacts of the deer layoffs in the Quad City area. So I haven't read it yet, but I put it in everyone's hands. Mr. Schmidt is mayor pro temp this month. He will represent me tomorrow, as I have a funeral out of town at the ByState meeting where they're gonna go through this. So now you'll have the same information, and hopefully that'll help you, as you talk with residents, and find out what they need. I also just wanted to share in conversations about economic development, thinking through our community engagement, the kinds of things I talked with Administrator Vitas about quite often, and Barry and our CED folks. I'm interested in hosting a community meeting at some point for the east end neighborhoods about what they'd like to see in the TIF, the new TIF down there. You heard last week, you know, reviving an idea about housing in one portion of that TIF. But this is a great chance for us to talk with them about anything they might envision or things that our staff could envision that would be successful there. What I'm hoping to avoid is the history of us opening TIFs and maybe doing one project, and then nothing else happens there. That is not good for our economic development. So I hope that's of interest to you, just continuing our track record of community engagement, I think, would be great. So to be determined when that might be, but.
Absolutely.
We've been chatting about that idea. That's all I have right now. Ms. Murphy? Mr. Macias?
Nothing, your honor.
Timian?
Thank you, your honor. I made a post on Facebook about this, but I witnessed the streets crew using the new paver to work on a number of our trails in lesser-known areas. It's a way to practice getting used to the equipment. And it was just, it was really great to see them out there doing it, and the trails were great. They've been gravel for as long as I remember, or dirt, and they no longer are. And so I, I'm really appreciative to them and the hard work they're putting into mastering this equipment before going into primetime, and also using it as an opportunity to fix some areas that definitely needed it. And so definitely appreciate them for that, and that is it, your honor.
Thank you. Schmidt?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. McNeil?
Nothing, your honor.
Castro?
Nothing, your honor.
Schmidt?
Nothing, your honor.
Seth?
Nothing, your honor.
Any other Seth? Okay. Any further public comment this evening, chief? Okay, I believe we do have executive session, however.
Your honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition dash five, ILCS one twenty slash two, C five.
Second.
All right, it was seconded by Timian. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries.
Thank you, we will go into closed session.